And we don't actually have a hard, fast, written procedure for how we do these interviews. You know, thankfully, they're not as common as they could be. So, there are a number of things that we have to discuss ahead of time in terms of how are we going to do this, what are we going to do, who's going to go first, how are we going to pick the order, things like that. They're all administrative, they're all trivial, but we have to have a plan so that, you know, we're not, we can get through this as efficiently as possible. So, the first question has to do with questions from the public or the press. And, what's up?
No press.
Well, the public as well, it's the same thing, right? We can call it two different things, but it's the same thing. We're elected, everybody on the other side is not. So, the press and the public have the same rights, we can't offer one to ask questions and not the other, I don't, I don't think. So, the question is, how best to handle that? My thought is that we will, we could, go ahead.
I was just going to say there's two publics.
There's two publics.
That's it.
They're all public, they may be candidates as well, but they're all public.
I'm saying there's only two, I wouldn't say you could let a candidate ask questions to another candidate.
Right.
Or make a public comment to another candidate.
So, what I was thinking was that we could have people sort of ask questions, any, any member of the public or the press that wanted to ask questions, of, can ask them in advance before we get started to us, and then if we choose to include one of their questions back to the, back to the candidates as board members, that would probably be the best way. Because I think we've all, we are very representative of the general public, so we are going to have the same questions as everybody out there is going to have. One of us will touch on whatever your topics are. So, that, I think that's probably the best way. Does anybody have an objection to doing it that way?
No.
All right. So, that's, see, that's the first thing, done. The next thing is that we like to keep the playing field as, as flat as possible, as fair to everybody, as equitable as possible. So, the next question that comes up is, do we have the candidates all stay in here and listen to each other's answers and questions? Because we're all going to be asking the same questions of each candidate, to make, again, to make it fair. We're not going to ask one person, you know, to give us details on the budget, and the next person, you know, who's their favorite teacher? Not fair. So, the idea is that what we do is generally in the past, we've, we've asked candidates to step out of the room and wait, you know, while we're, while we're interviewing folks. Is there anybody who doesn't want to do that? Yes, sir?
I don't actually care, but, but I'd just point out that I've been through, I've been present in at least six of these, and it's been done both ways, and I really see no difference, honestly, between them personally. If you prefer to segregate, like we did the last, when, when we considered you for your seat, then, then that's fine. I guess my personal preference would be to hear what others say, like when I was considered against Diane five years ago. It didn't really matter whether, you know, and by the way, the questions were different too, that time. They weren't all the same questions. And that worked just as well, but, you know, it's your, your preference.
Fair enough. I think that we have, we have generally adopted the idea that we're going to ask the same questions of each candidate, because that is the, that is the best way, I think, it's the best way to see how they react and, and see how they answer the questions and their, their depth of knowledge. This is not a grueling process, it's just something you're going to go through, right? It's like any other job interview. And the only reason I would suggest that we stay with having the members sit outside while they're being, while the others are being interviewed, is because the first people will be at a, necessarily will be at a net disadvantage, and by the time we get to the fifth person, they can have a real great answer prepared. You know, I mean, it is possible to think ahead and plan your act, answer, and know what the buzzwords are, and figure out how you're going to answer it. It's miniscule, and I don't know that how much it matters in the, in this grand scheme of things, but we're trying very, very hard to not only be fair, but to give the appearance of being fair in everything that we're doing. So, that would be my recommendation. How do, how do the members feel about that?
I think that's a good one.
Okay.
Member brother, the, the, the.
Okay. Very good. All right. Related but different, do we want them to go back out when they're done, or can they stay sitting? Because they've already answered all the questions.
I have no preference.
I have no preference. So, we will leave it up to you. If you choose to, to stay in after you've answered your questions, that's fine. If you want to go back to the other room, that's fine as well. So, there's that. Number of questions. There are six of us here who'll be asking questions. No, that, neither of them will be asking questions. Ashley is literally on a plane, she's landing in Philadelphia now, so she will not be on the phone or listening at all. Mr. Parker just ran into some folks, and he is going to be monitoring the call, but he is not going to be asking questions or anything like that. So, there'll be six of us tonight who'll be asking questions. And when you look at sort of five questions, three to five minutes per answer, and that sort of thing, the math starts adding up quickly. So, I paused, I asked the board earlier to think about a number of questions that they wanted to ask each person. So, now's the time for you to tell me how many you think is a reasonable number. I will not allow anything over five. Okay, two?
I have three.
Three?
Two.
I have one, sorry.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to average the three and the one, and call that two, and give everybody else two. Does that work? Except me, I will take three. My last, my last question is just going to be, any thoughts you want to present to the board that we haven't asked you about? Okay, so that's giving it away. So, that's that. So, that's the fourth item. I brought it up, but I, you know, after having thought about it, I, I've kind of reconsidered, but since I brought it up, follow-up questions. If we ask somebody a question and we're not sure about the response, do we want to have follow-up questions?
If we need clarification on what we responded, otherwise we would be maybe better off.
All right.
Yeah, my, my comment about two questions was one and a follow-up.
You can split them up any way you want. Any, two original questions or one to follow, yes.
When you were going around asking about questions, I presumed, I'm going to ask one, and I'm probably going to want to follow it up.
Okay. So, the next one was, we're going to give everybody an opportunity for an opening statement. We didn't, you know, tell you in advance that we were going to do this, but I think it's a reasonable expectation, a kind of standard practice. So, the question is, how much time should we have in terms of a limit for the opening sort of statement in the background? Two minutes? Five? Two?
Three.
Three?
Three.
Three. Okay, we, yeah, we're taking, we're taking an average, and that works out to three. So, that's where we're going to go, unless anybody has a strong objection. All right. The next thing that we have to, to talk about tonight, I want to be, because again, trying to be fair, we got five candidates who gave us resumes and, and statements, and that's great, we're very happy about that. We did not get them posted to the public until today, late today, later today. I don't know exactly what time it was, I wasn't watching the clock on that. But, in order to give the public an opportunity to review them, because they are posted now on the, on the board docs, and to ask questions, or to, you know, give us their thoughts, or this, that, and the other, we thought it would not be, in our best interest, for a number of reasons, to have a vote tonight. And how do people feel about that? Just real quick?
Well, as far as having the public be able to review everything, they're not going to be voting, so that to me is a huge thing, but I would like personally to be able to, you know, it's five candidates, I'd like to be able to digest the information and think about it, and make sure, you know, what I, what I believe to be the best candidate is the one I vote for. So, having overnight at least to think about it would be best for me.
Same here, I feel we should just digest it, and it's important to really think it through.
All right. It is not our intent to inconvenience anybody, but we think that that's just, I think, the responsible thing to do, and hopefully, and gratefully, everybody seems to agree on that. So, we do have two regularly scheduled meetings between now and the deadline. The deadline is on or about September 2nd, because we, we got the announcement on August 2nd, we have 30 days, so it actually would be like the 31st, but regardless, we have the 14th and the 28th tomorrow, and then two weeks from now are regular meetings, and we could also, if we so desired, schedule a meeting in between, a special meeting, it would be announced, and it would be advertised, and all of that. So, we are going to have, we are going to have a decision no later than the 28th, and we would like it sooner than that. All right? We're not going to decide tonight on that. We'll have another chance to talk about it tomorrow at our regularly scheduled board meeting.
Do you have a question?
Yes, please.
Since we're as vague as to when we'll be having it, is there going to be a requirement that the candidates be there at that meeting if they've already had something planned in advance? I mean, since we don't know when or if we're making a decision, having them put their lives on hold, possibly from vacations and such during this time, might not be the most... I mean, to me, I don't, if they're not here when we make the decision, if we're not asking them questions, I see no reason that they would be required to or not required to. If we're going to have a second interview, then that's different, but...
Well, I think after tonight, and after, after we think about it overnight, we'll have a much better idea tomorrow of where we stand on that. I, my general preference is no, not to require them to come a second time. My general desire and preference is not to subject them to more questions, but that's where I'm sitting tonight before we have talked to everybody. So, we all agree on that generally? Okay. All right. And the last thing I'm going to need, so I'm going to need you, if you don't mind, Laurie, to get us five slips of paper with the number one through five on them, so that people can draw a number, and how, the number you draw will be the order in which you are interviewed, unless anybody has an objection to that. Okay, we generally have consensus, shall we read all those decisions back, so everybody has them, or are we good?
I think we can ask the members, but I think...
I think everything was sort of straightforward and upfront. Would you let me read it back in the form of a motion, and then we can have a second and a vote, or are we, everybody okay, just moving forward with?
We can have a motion.
Okay. All right, very good. Good.
If you're calling this an actual meeting, once you're all ready, then you're going to have to do the pledge.
Yeah. Yep. That's what's next.
There we go.
All right, so I'll call this meeting of the Potsgrove School Board together, and order, and then we will go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. So, call the roll. Basically, we have, as I said, our folks here, and we are missing Ashley and Bill Parker. Leaving us with six. Okay, so now we come to the portion of public comment. So, does anybody have any questions they would like to, yes, sir?
Is this the opportunity, Mr. Lundgren?
This is the opportunity, this is the time.
So, if, if I were to be asking questions of candidates, my name is Franz Kraselkovich, upper Potsgrove Township. If I were to be asking questions, I would ask two, neither are novel in any way, shape, or form. The first would be yes or no, which would be, you're not fulfilling the remainder of Mr. Alexander's term, you're fulfilling it up until the next election, would you intend to run in the next, in the next election for the remainder of the term? That would be my question number one. Question number two would be more open-ended, and that is, how do you generally view the role or job of school director? I would want to know, basically in their words, how they view the job. So, those would be my two questions, Mr. Lundgren. Thank you.
Very reasonable, nobody could take issue with those, I don't think. So, there we are. Sir?
My question is just a clarification. Did you decide that we do or don't have to be present for the as-yet-undetermined date at which time you did choose the person?
The working answer is, we have not decided, however, comma, I do not anticipate that people will be required to come back for a second meeting, or to answer any additional questions.
It would be personally inconvenient for me to have to come back tomorrow, seeing as I came back from the shore today for this, and I'm going back tomorrow morning, which is why I'm asking the question.
We will not ask you to be present tomorrow.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anything else?
I can't see what to...
All right. So now we've already talked about all the different aspects of it. What I would like to do now is, first of all, thank each of you for submitting this, and, and for having an interest in, in participating in this. Every part, every part of our constitutional republic depends on participation by the people. And whether you're in the audience, whether you're up here, or whether you're in the school, we all, we all need to participate. So, thank you, each of you, for putting your names forward and, and coming here tonight. So, that's, those, those are the extent of my opening comments. So, we will start with getting our folks to head on out. Do we have a spot for them, where they can go? Can they sit? Look at you.
I saw your sigh.
Yeah, say just on that, it's like, yeah, that's number one, that's right. As late as this is set.
All right. Very good. So, what we're going to do, I think, is we'll kind of go, working from that side to this side, and coming back up the way for each candidate, if that's all right? Okay.
Opening statements.
Opening statement, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Lundgren, Dr. Sherup, members of the board. My name is Mark Jorgensen. I live here in the Potsgrove School District over on Yurka Road. My family and I moved here from Texas in 2016, due to some job organizational changes. I was involved in an integration, a company integration, and that gave me the opportunity to actually move back home. I grew up up the road from here in Lehigh Valley, in a town called McCungee, actually, Lower McCungee. And, so, it was, it was a bit of coming home after 10 years. And one of the things, we, we were looking for a place to live in and around the Philadelphia area. I have an office in Radnor, and I have to go to the airport quite a bit, so I wanted to have something close by. And we looked at lots of houses. The, the selling point for this area was a visit to Potsgrove Middle School. We met Ms. Kleinfelter and Dr. Ramage, probably had the biggest impact on myself, and my kids, and my wife. And I'll tell you, to be honest, my wife wasn't crazy about the house we picked. The kitchen, of course, she wasn't crazy about, but that actually sold us on settling here. And there's a lot of charm in the area, history, I, I understand, I live near or on the remnants of an old amusement park that, around the Ringing Rocks area. And so, it's just been a, a great adventure, learning about the Potsgrove area. I have two children that are entering freshman and sophomore years at Potsgrove High School, so I do have a vested interest in the success of the school district. And I did see the, the opportunity, I think I wavered when I first heard about it, I talked to a few people, and it was a last, probably a last-minute decision to, to put my, my hat in, so to speak. And I, I know that the roles that you all have are, are large, you have a great responsibility, you are sending out citizens into the world in varying degrees and professions, and you want them to be good citizens and continual learners. And I, from what I've seen with my, my children, it's, it's been a great experience so far with their learning, the teachers have been very personal, interaction. Where I lived in Texas, it was, it was a little bit bigger school, I'll tell you, four times the size, class-wise, so you were pretty much a number, so that the personal interaction has been great. They, my, my children are involved in music and sports, and the coaches as well do a lot to build character. So, I find this opportunity as a way of giving back to the community that I've come to settle in, and I look forward to your questions.
All right. Now, which...
Well, two things, welcome to the area. I'm from, originally from Allentown, and I know where Laura McCungee and Buckeye Pipeline is.
All right.
But, the question is one that, he asked my question earlier. In a few months, and I don't want to count right now, if you stand for election, you're going to have to stand for election, and in Pennsylvania, this is a bipartisan position, you file for both parties. Do you intend to run if you are chosen? And, you know, and why would you intend to run for this job? It certainly can't be the money.
I, honestly, I don't know. Right now, I would probably say no, I don't, I wouldn't intend to run. I think, I, I feel immediate call to step up and fill the vacancy and, and serve out the term for the Potsgrove School District. I don't have experience in elected positions, but I do, again, have an interest to help out the community, so I have not even looked that far down the road. I only have a few hours since I, again, applied for this.
Here's my follow-up question, based on that. What would it take to persuade you to run for reelection so soon after being installed?
I think it would be probably a matter of my understanding of the, the details of the, of the school district. I know, I know generally some of the issues at hand, and know my ability to, to influence those for the better. And if I feel that's, that's the case, then I would feel an obligation to, to run for reelection in that case.
Good, welcome to the area. Actually, I've lived in McCungee for a while, and it's a nice place, very nice town. With the decisions that we have to make, both publicly and privately, we, they affect the community as a whole. In some cases, they affect directly the students, sometimes it's the teachers, and other times it's a combination of all three. But when you're looking at the three, those three sections individually, do you see one group being more required to be taken care of than the others, more important than the others, and would you explain, please?
I, of course, I have two children in the school district, but I also have several family members, my sister, my sister-in-law, my father-in-law, all teachers in, in various parts of the country, my, so I, I understand the struggles that teachers have to face, the challenges they face. And I, I do know that a good learning environment for my student is also a good working environment for the teacher. And so, all those things have to come together to make not only a fulfilling experience for the student, but also a fulfilling career for, for the teachers as well. So, I, I think they do go hand in hand.
Community part?
As, as well as the community, the community benefits from a well-run organization, fiscally and culturally and organizationally, that these students want to come and learn, the teachers want to come and teach, and the community wants to become a part of the experience that, that's going on here at, at Potsgrove School District.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, obviously, a really large part of what we do here is going to be based off of the budget. Two areas that we really concentrate on is the budget and the curriculum. Budget being probably something we care more about with, obviously, the community. So, my question to you is going to be, this year coming up is going to be our teacher contract is coming up for negotiations. What are your general thoughts about the possibly increasing the taxes to our local economy base, if necessary, to accommodate a teacher increase?
I looked at the budget, some of the comments from the minutes, I don't know all the details. I know you're running a little over $5 million a month, is your 67 million annual budget, I think it is. And you were able to avoid raising taxes this past year, and avoid laying off staff through allocation of, from what I understand, staff retirement benefits? Yeah, and, and then some other allocations of surpluses that you, you attained through, I think, retirement and some attritions as well. I, I also saw that 60% of the budget is service debt. I don't exactly know what that is, and what that entails, what, what the obligations are financially, if they're mostly around loans or mortgages, or if there are penalties involved in that. I don't know what, what the breakdown is, that would be something I'd want to dig into more. It does feel a, a little steep. Usually, you see the inverse of that for, for budgets as far as compensation and cost versus, you know, facilities or capital costs. So, I, I'm a little concerned, too, if the, the economy takes a downturn, that there will be a little bit of paying the piper in the future, and probably having to raise the taxes. The taxes in lower Potsgrove, and, and up, well, actually, all lower west and upper Potsgrove, I'm still getting used to all the, the names, are some of the highest in the area. So, there's not a lot of room there. I, I do see a lot of development in the area, although some of it's senior living, you're not going to get a lot of kids out of that, but you are going to get some tax base there. I think there's a lot of factors at play. I think my, my main concerns are probably what, what does that debt entail, and also, how would the economy affect the ability to main, to maintain budget in the future?
Do we, do you want to...
With, with the board's indulgence, that, that number that he's talking about...
Is wrong.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is it wrong? I'm sorry.
No, no, it's, it's all right. It's all right. I just wanted to, have those, about 67% of our budget is fixed costs, that's true, but fixed costs in that salary is, is a major component of that. And then we do have a debt service that we can, if we wish, to refinance it from time to time. But the vast majority of our budget is fixed costs, to include the salaries and other compensation for the staff.
Okay.
But then, so it's a little more than 8.5%? Yeah.
Okay. I, I misread the treasurer's report.
That's okay. It's all right. Okay, so...
Go around this way now, keep going.
Yeah. Oh, we want to, okay.
Welcome to the area.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask you, currently, we have a lot of social changes going on in the area and the country itself, safety risks, we see all the enhanced measures, let this district take... We see all the enhanced measures let this district takes. Test scores are always a big issue with us. You know that with your kids in the school. And taxes, as Al has pointed out, is there any of those you would identify as the biggest concern and how you would attack those? Or what are your thoughts on that?
I think, again, going back fiscally, just to make sure, again, I didn't get the details right, but I did see it was a little tight as far as the budget went, especially when your, your two solutions are either raising taxes or reducing headcount in some way. As far as safety, I have seen a lot of good responses from the various police departments around the area. They seem to be doing a lot more training, from what I've seen. I, I know that the response that Potts Grove High School had with the loose chicken incident last year, thankfully, nothing came of it, but I think it does raise questions about security in the schools. I do think that the measures that have been taken probably reduce the risks quite a bit. I don't know where that tipping point is, where you start getting into areas of civil rights versus safety. Again, I, I don't think I have enough information on that, but that is, that is a concern, of course. Every time my, my kids go to, I did get a text when that happened, and my daughter was terrified. So as a father, that did frighten me. So of, you know, any emotional aspect of it, that was one that, you know, really kicked in. But I also knew that the fact, the way the school responded, responded rapidly, and also, you know, understood the crisis that could have been, you know, in that case. So I think as far as momentum, it's moving well in that direction. So I don't see that as being as much of an issue as I did maybe a few months ago.
Well, hi, Mark. How are you? I see you went to the Naval Academy.
Yes, ma'am.
And served in the Navy, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I commend you for stepping forward, too. But you can't expect everything all at once and know everything. But what do you believe is the role of a school director?
I feel the role of a school director is a, is a level of oversight and overseer in some degree. And when I say that, I mean someone's not micromanaging in any, any respect. I think there may be cases where individual directors have a particular passion, as Mr. Hunt alluded to, and I think that's great. I do think, though, that we don't want to, you know, miss the, the big picture on the issues we talked about, organizational issues, fiscal issues, and cultural issues, as well as having a strong learning environment and a safe school. So I do think a lot of these issues, one, it's solving the problems that may arise in the individual schools that are beyond the scope of what the teachers and the staff can handle, or addressing the concerns that are coming out of the public as well. We are representatives of the, of the public, the parents, the children, and the community at large. And so we want to make sure that we are addressing their concerns as well. So it is, there's a lot of pieces there. I don't know if I answered your question clearly on that.
Very good. All right. So my first question, Mike, is related to the questions we've heard before, and that is, especially as concerns the budget. Basically, one of the two responsibilities of school board directors is to pass a budget. And passing of the budget, I appreciate what you said about, you know, the two options were this and that. Those were not the only two. Those are just the final two that we came down to.
Right.
Right? And the process is, how do we get to those things? As we, as we as a board, you know, go through the year, we look at, you know, well, this is going to cost, this is going to have an impact. What are we going to do? Because you've got to keep your budget in mind, basically, all year long. So with that in mind, what I'd like to do is sort of ask you, what are your priorities, your budgetary priorities? How would you assess the different things? I mean, do you want to, do you want to keep the same staff? Is that a high priority? Do you want to add more? Do you want to keep all of the programs that we have going? Do you focus more on benefits at the cost of other things for the teachers? Just where are your priorities in establishing the balance for the budget?
Again, having two, two children in the school district, I also have, of the two, I have an honor student. I also have a student that's going to the Western Montgomery Technological Center, so I'm getting a pretty wide experience as a parent. And I do, I do applaud Potts Grove for having the various options. As, as a businessman, I do see a tremendous need for qualified individuals at every level out. There's just, the jobs are out there, and they're just tough to fill right now because it's, there's a lot of, we're seeing a lot of people, graduates, that just aren't qualified or maybe not interested. They don't know what they really want to do. And I like the passion that Potts Grove has for instilling that desire, curiosity in the students. So as far as the budget goes, I, I don't like, you know, I never like reducing headcount, but I know sometimes that's the case. I don't think we would want to make that the first option, but again, it's, again, I was corrected, it is 67% of the budget. There are lots of other things, issues as well. You need to respond to the union concerns as well as the community concerns. There's, you don't have a lot of schools in the district, so it's, it's a pretty thin broad, I don't, and I'm looking at the demographic, I don't see any, any reduction in the, in the population of students coming through, so it still seems like it's pretty steady. The only thing I would see is you could reduce class sizes in some cases, but I also, as a parent, have seen the benefit of these smaller class sizes than, than we had in Texas. It's, it's, it's difficult. So I, I do think, I don't have enough information to give you where I would land on that, but I do think nothing can be off the table. Sometimes I have seen, and again, I don't know all the issues as far as staffing and the union requirements, but I have seen a lot of, well, a frequent number of resignations over, you know, several months. And I don't know what the pattern is or what the turnover rate is, but that's always an option of not filling open positions as opposed to letting someone go. That's always an easier, easier route to go. And I think that should be something to look, look at. I've also seen, I think your policy, you changed on procurement, which was about 50% over the state limits for looking for, asking for quotes or getting, you know, getting bids on procurement. I don't know how much that had an effect on it. So it would be, again, what, what would make the biggest impact from the budget? And that would require me to dig a little bit deeper into the budget and understand a little better than I, of course, showed here in the beginning.
Have a knack for that time-wonder thing. Okay. Happy about that. So just back to you. I'm coming in as one question.
I'm good. Thank you.
Now, take your time. All right. So while you're doing that, obviously, two of the areas, like we alluded already, one being the budget, the other being curriculum. But I'm not going to ask about curriculum here. I'm going to ask a little bit about, a little different than just the role of the director. The school district as a whole is probably the, in this particular area, the largest or the second-largest employer for the community. And it affects probably the entire community and how much we tax and different things like that with the budget, the students, taking care of them and different things like that, and getting them ready for the education. My question is going to be, is what are your thoughts on the district's involvement within the community and the reputation to the community? And then how do you feel that it should be enhanced?
Well, I think first off, I was impressed with the access to, actually, it's not just the school district, but a lot of the, the lower Potts Grove, school, Montgomery County, access to agenda minutes. So you, you already make it easy to get information. This wasn't the case. I don't want to dump on Texas a little bit, but where I lived, it was a lot tougher to get information. And we found at the teacher level, at the, at the administrative office level, principal, it was much, much easier here to get information. So I do think accessibility, you're already doing it, so I don't see that an issue. I don't know as far as visibility. I think, I'm sure each of you are involved in the community to some degree. I don't know how you would expand on that. You have open meetings, so you have a very transparent committee and organization. The board is transparent, and the school district is. So as far as, I, again, I don't, I don't have a good answer on that. And I-
Let me help you out a little bit.
Yeah.
All right. As into, let's say, what you're hearing, obviously, when I speak to community members, they're going to see me as a different individual. They're not going to speak to me probably, or at least some won't speak to me, as, you know, Al, the board director, Al involved with the Booster Club and stuff like that. I'm looking to find out how you feel from what you've heard, our reputation is for this community, not necessarily going to be the people that are sending their students here. Trying to find out what your thoughts are as in how you feel the district is interacting with the community as a whole.
Only living here for two years, I don't have the history of my children, of course, going through the elementary school. And actually, I found that interesting for my kids. They had a tough time breaking in as far as into the circles socially, because these are kids that grew up, you know, every grade with the same, the same students. So they, they bonded with their relationships hard for a new kid to come in. Where they lived before, it was a little more transient, so there was people coming in and out. So I don't have a history with the board that other people might have. I don't, so my opinion isn't, isn't negative. I'd say it's slightly positive, just from what I've seen there. I do, you know, I do know that there have been in the past, you know, and again, I don't know all the details of it, incidents with teachers in the past 10 years, and I don't know how that rates compared to other school districts. But that was probably the biggest concern I had, and I, again, there wasn't a lot of information on how that was addressed. I think if that does happen again, I think it's very important that it's handled quickly and with as much information for the public to avoid gossip and to avoid rumors and to avoid social media craziness. And so I think in those cases, when there is a negative piece, I think being proactive, and I'm, based on what I'm seeing, I think you're well-prepared to do that as well, so.
If you were selected to serve out the remainder of this term, you would be asked to serve on some committees, curriculum policy, athletic, co-curricular, facilities. Are there any that jump out at you or you feel you'd be best suited to be on?
I've, I've worked in engineering environments and managed facilities, so facilities would probably be a natural fit. I've, I've had large budgets to, to deal with. Curriculum is probably a weak area for me, except having, of course, family members that would probably tell me what I should think in those areas, or give me good advice as well. So I think it probably along those lines, my, both my children in sports, so even recreation as well. So I guess I would, and I've also been, I've also had the, the desire to go into areas I'm not familiar with, to just give it fresh eyes. And I think that's one thing I do offer here. I don't have a history with the community. Actually, some, some reason, Potts Grove has given me a sort of Pennsylvanian nostalgia, having been gone for, for 10 years, coming back and enjoying autumn here, and it wasn't 95 degrees, so that was nice.
Well, I know where, if you get elected, you could be with me at the Western Center, because that's, that's, that's great.
That, of course, would be, yeah, I didn't know if that was a separate committee or not.
Yeah, I'm just, I chair over there. But in fact, we had a meeting tonight that they're carrying on. But one question I do have for you, Mark. Is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the Board of Education?
Well, I'd be dishonest if I didn't say that my children are probably the primary motivation. I think it's my responsibility as a parent to raise children of good character and to have a, a school district that walks alongside them in the same manner, and I do see that here at Potts Grove. And then also, just want to see them provide, I don't expect any, any child to come out of here certified or licensed or anything out of the school district, but ready for that next step, whatever it may be, whether it's a job right out of the gate or continuing education for what have you, that they're all prepared for that. This community needs that, the state needs it, and this country needs it, to have these students prepared for that.
The other responsibility of the school board, basically, is to select and evaluate the superintendent. Those are, that's really it. Everything else is, you know, moving bus stops. We do talk about the other things, we do have input, but the decisions are like, are usually made and why the superintendent and his staff, they bring them to us to review and approve. We can have some input, but it's really the administration's job to administer, you know, the, all of the different things. So in terms of, you know, you had a number of positions of increasing responsibilities, they like to say, and, and so have you done a lot of reviews, job reviews, and how do you handle, how do you tend to handle it? Do you use it as a once-a-year evaluation? Do you tend, do you like to give it input over the course of the year? What are your, what are your, what is your style in terms of reviews and evaluations?
I think part of it informally would be based on the individual, whether they want informal feedback, desire informal feedback, need it. I do think at least twice a year formally is, is a good frequency. I think more than that would be a little too much. I think if the goals are clear and the objectives are clear and the direction and the strategy is clear, Dr. Shirk and the staff are the experts. They're the ones who, who are in the trenches, so to speak, with the kids on a day-to-day basis. They are the first ones to see, you know, when an issue comes up and understand how to address it and have the experience to do that. So I think for, from an evaluation standpoint, those are the key. I do think that occasionally, the red flag pops up, and that's when you would ask questions, whether it's just to clear up a misunderstanding that I would have, oh, okay, now I see, I understand what it is, or that maybe this is an issue. And you want to have that relationship, that you can do that. You can ask the stupid question that either educates you or actually brings something up that, you know, maybe needs to be addressed.
One more question, Mark. Going to give you a scenario. A parent comes to you and complains about a teacher. What suggestions would you make to the parent? Had to.
Related to that.
Yeah.
Related to that. You have a problem with your own child. Teacher's being unfair, whatever, just, you know, same basic questions.
Well, I'd say as a, as a father, if I, if my child has an issue with the, a teacher, my default position is that my child is in the wrong. And so I'd start with that and try to figure out what the, what the situation is. In your case, I don't want to necessarily make that assumption for someone else. I would try to understand, has it, you know, I usually want the problem solved at either the lowest level or the furthest out to the field is where you want it. The, the new organization I'm in at work is every problem there is, the company president gets a phone call. And so everybody, every priority becomes an A priority, and it's very diff, we're working that out, but that's another issue. And that can happen here. If every call goes to Dr. Shirk, we don't want that to happen. We want to try to address it at the lowest level. If, being new, I may not know that if this is the- If, being new, I may not know that if this is the first issue, this may be a repeat issue for the teacher, this may be a repeat issue for the parent. I'm brand new, I wouldn't know either one. And that would be me requiring some legwork in finding that out.
My final question is, is there anything else you would like to say to the board based on either the questions we had or anything else that occurred to you while you were talking that you would like to tell us?
I guess I do have one question. This is out of curiosity. This is typically an elected position, so this is an appointed position. And I probably don't want the answer because I don't know what each of your requirements are or what you're looking for in filling this seat. But I do, I do care about the school district, I care about my children and their relationship with their teachers and how well they're learning and how well they're going to succeed, as well as their classmates. I want to see them succeed as well. Again, if you asked me to point Lower Pots Grove on a map 10 years ago, I wouldn't have known where to put it. Now it's the center of my world because my family's here. So I guess that's a statement, that's really not a question, but I, you know, I look forward to your decision.
All right. Well, thank you. I think we've gotten a good flavor and a good idea of who you are and what you believe. So you're welcome to join us in the audience or you're welcome to join the other candidates in the other room. That's your pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
And thank you.
Good evening. Hello, Mrs. Grimm.
Welcome. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate it very much. So you have three minutes to make your opening statement.
Thank you. I appreciate being informed of one just a few moments ago, but I went ahead and brought with me then what I wrote for you yesterday afternoon. So I apologize for the last moment, but here we go. As I believe you stated, you now have posted for the public a statement, just a segment of it. Education is a paramount part of who I am as a teacher, professor, and most of all, mother. I do have some of my own education, of course, but more importantly, I do not envy the decisions that school boards are often faced with. But I do applaud the efforts that empower our students to attain the best possible education while with us and then continue in the most advantageous direction possible. So thank you for what you do. With all that our district has already done for my children and I'm confident that they'll continue to do, I'm pleased to offer my services. Should there be a more suitable candidate, I support that in full. I'm merely a mother, educator, and community member who's standing up and offering her time, knowledge, experience, insight, passion, commitment, and genuine desire to give back to a district that has given so much. If I can be of service, I'm pleased to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll go ahead and we'll just go ahead and get started with Mr. Nipper.
Okay, I'm going to begin with the question that you stole from me, which is that if you're chosen, in about four or five months, you would have to start filing petitions. And you're probably aware, in Pennsylvania, this is a bipartisan body. You file petitions for both parties. And the question is, would you run for reelection if it's him?
Thank you for the question. And thank you as well. Well, that is not something that at this time I had planned. The big joke is always, of course, if you want to make God laugh, tell him your plans. So as I learned of this position just yesterday, sitting in service over at Hope Community, I said, all right, if this is the calling, let it be. And if this is your will as well, let it be. I would likewise need to reevaluate as this process goes on. And if this is, again, advantageous to our current board and to our school and most of all to our students, absolutely, I would be pleased and honored to do so. Likewise, if there are more suitable candidates and the timeframe has then allowed them to more adequately prepare, I would be pleased to allow them that position. I'm always going to want what's best for our kids first and foremost and therefore our district as a whole.
Thank you. How much time do you think it's going to take to serve on the school board per week?
Oh, a great amount. First, as a newcomer, I know I will need to do a ridiculous amount of research. And of course, my students are going to laugh if ever they know that I'm saying this because I'm constantly telling them to read, 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 and research, research. So that's a lot of backwork to be done, again, as a newcomer. But as any member, to stay on top of the many issues and to hear all of the community as best as able, I don't believe it's just a meeting here, a meeting here, that's continuously being plugged in to those needs. And I am not prepared to say, oh, an hour a week or even three hours a week. I'm just able to say that fortunately, though I'm teaching high school full-time and college part-time and have those four young children that I do, I admittedly sleep very rarely. So I've got that time and I'm pleased to put it in should I be selected to do so.
All right. Point of order, that really wasn't a follow-up question, it was a completely separate question. So I'm going to.
It was a good question.
It was. You're a little loose with your interpretation of follow-up. Well, since I got eyeballs from everybody in the room.
Actually, the first question, Mr. Lindgren, was mine, so.
That is gracious of you.
Well, actually, you know, that was my, that had been in my mind before you spoke.
You both get credit. It was a good question.
Great minds think alike.
So, sorry, I'm going to pass over you next time.
That's fine.
Thank you very much for applying for us.
Oh, thank you.
Whenever we have to make decisions, a lot of times, the decisions will affect what happens to the students, what happens with the teachers and the community as well. And often, it'll benefit one, but at a, you know, deficit to the other two. So do you see one of those groups being more important than the others? If so, why?
Absolutely not. Unless all have the opportunity and make the most of that opportunity to work together, our community is going to fail. And yes, I do as a teacher here, oh, the big bad school board and, oh, the big bad union and, oh, you know, those kids aren't appreci- I am in that unique position that I hear it as a mother, I hear it as a community member, and I hear it as a teacher. And if I can be so frank, I, and perhaps it's not very sensitive, but I often think in my head, though I don't voice it terribly often, suck it up, Buttercup, because, and I know that's pretty harsh, but I do believe that there's always opportunity. And I tell my students, it's, you know, find the good, look for the good in this. And like that right there, that's my reminder that my children have something going on because whether it's my kids at home or my kids at school, there's always something occurring for them. I say, oh, no, an alarm went off. But no, I'm glad for the technology in our schools and at home that allow them to have what they need. And again, oh, no, phone's going off in school, end of the world. No, you have the opportunity to have phones in school, let's make the most of it. So whether that makes me ridiculously naive or pleasantly optimistic, and I realize kind of skirting around this a little bit, but there's no loser if we're all looking to win together. So I don't know how else to say it other than my goal will be for us to work together because I want our kids to win. And if we have teachers who aren't looking for that as well, I'm sorry, but there's no place for them in our district, and I'm saying that as a teacher. So let them come with their lynchess. I've worked with them before too. But every true educator I've known, whether they're an administrator, whether they're a custodian, they're there for our kids. And that's what this is supposed to be about.
So it's supposed to be about the kids?
Absolutely. But that means no one's left behind. So you've got to take care of your teachers. You've got to take care of your custodians. Every single one of those components have to be factored in. Prior to being an educator, I was a restaurant manager. And I learned if I don't take care of my people, they're not going to take care of my guests and our restaurant's going down. I didn't have to yell at someone to go over there and mop that. I picked up the mop and I went and did it because then guaranteed someone was going to come over and take it out of my hand and do it with me. So I'm going to take care of every component because then at the end of the day, my guests are taken care of and I'm hitting bonus. And that's nice in my book. Thank you.
In the role of the director, and you're going to, they're going to ask that question again, obviously, besides the students and such like that, one of our big areas is going to be about the budget. Now, this question's going to be interesting, it can be interesting to hear about this one from you, and the fact that coming up is our teacher contract negotiation, right? So the question I'm going to ask is, in what would your opinion be and your thoughts on when we're negotiating the contract, how it'll affect the community if we need to raise the taxes to pay for an additional increase in the salaries?
Absolutely. Now, of course, we always hear about the awful, awful taxes. That's known, that's no secret. No one's ever going to get around that. And yeah, that's really unfortunate, but that is part of how our government works. And it's not like you didn't know that when you moved here. If you didn't, then that's gross negligence on your part. And what do you care about? You should care about, of course, your children, as cliche as that is, but that means you care about their education. And you always have the opportunity to relocate. And again, that sounds harsh, but those are the facts. I mean, to my knowledge right now, we have a situation, and not to throw a lot out there, but where we're going to have to decide where are all of these literal numbers going to go. And that's likely going to mean some kind of, and perhaps I'm wrong, but probably at some point, some kind of redistricting or more building, more space. In the district I work in, we're currently in a situation where we have a building that's not ready to open and more than a year behind. Yeah, that makes people really angry. And I appreciate that they care, that they notice, that they're passionate. I'm not trying to discredit their concerns, they're valid concerns. But at the end of the day, that money's got to come from somewhere. And I don't believe that anyone's out there shopping, doing, you know, their own personal bidding. If they were, they ought to be called on that, but I don't think that that's the case. So if someone has a real concern, how about you show up to the meetings and how about you share your thoughts in respectful fashion? Otherwise, why are you passing judgment on what one small group of people are trying to do for your entire community? And really, we've got to pay for it somehow. So if you have a better idea, bring it to us. The joke in my home and school, of course, is I teach English, not math. So I do not excel with numbers, but even I can do those basic ones of it's got to be paid for. And if taxes are the only option we have, I live here, I'm certainly going to pay my share because I want my four kids to have every opportunity. They're not going to go to college for free.
Follow.
Yes.
With my question and with Jim's question, my question to you is, where does the community rank with you representing them as an elected official?
I don't believe that I can, again, put them in terms of numbers. And it sounds so cliche to say, oh, all working together. I'm not asking us to sit and hold pinkies and sing kumbaya by any means. But each needs to reevaluate for themselves. You know, why are we here? Why do we live in this district? I made it clear in my statement, I'm here because of our schools. It would have been really easy to say, hey, you know, it's time to relocate, it's time to just get a fresh start somewhere else. There are certainly plenty of really nice towns all around us, but this is where I want to be for my children because of our schools. And that means I'm going to invest in them. And if we have community members who don't feel the same, I'm not saying, hey, everybody move out. But by all means, why are you here? What is the most important part of your community? If it has nothing to do with our schools, then perhaps you do want to reevaluate your housing situation and why you're here because that is a big part of our tax dollars, of course. We've got a lot of kids here and they deserve an education. They shouldn't have to worry about mom and dad can't pay the electric because of this. If you're not able to cover your bills, maybe we have other issues there. I don't know your personal circumstances to any individual and it's not for me to pass judgment. I don't wear a robe, I'm not God, it's not my job. But really, our schools, our community's going to fail without them. We know that. So let's find a way to work together to make it work.
Nice to meet you.
Likewise. Thank you, Mr. Hutt.
There are a variety of issues facing any school district. You see these at your job and the country as a whole and this community, whether it be social, safety, test scores, taxes, et cetera, as that has been covered. Are there any of those you feel are the biggest concern of this district or ones that you have a real passion towards?
At present, in terms of in my local community, I am hearing of concerns at the middle school and high school and on and on and on. Of course, I only hear from a select group of people on those consistently. As a teacher and mother, I hear the horrors of testing. And of course, it is really inconvenient as a teacher to have your students repeatedly pulled for testing. That is inconvenient, but there are purposes to it. And I understand those purposes and I respect that it has to be done. If, again, someone finds a better way, I am always open to hearing those other ways. And if they serve plausible, count a gal in because sometimes there are better options. At present, I don't know them. Right now, I know they're a fact of life. And if nothing else, they will prepare our students for when they sit down for those other tests that we are all fans of, like your SATs, because I get to proctor those too. And you need, again, you find the good in it, cliche as that may be. So, yeah, testing, we're all going to hear about it nonstop. Taxes, that's a given. But these greater issues of, oh, our middle school has all these big issues, well, what are they specifically? And where are they stemming from? Because until I hear something very specific, I'm going to treat it like I do, we have what we call our faculty senate. And your responsibility as a volunteer teacher, you need to come to me with, here's the concern and here is my suggestion for how to solve it. Because if you don't have that, I'm sorry if it's harsh, but it sounds like you're just complaining. And I certainly want to hear your complaint. But unless you can propose something to plausibly help with this, I don't know how to help you because I don't have all the answers. I'd like areas of opportunity, but I'd like to know the opportunity and how to address it. We're always going to have issues, we're never going to be perfect. Work with us.
Welcome, Jody.
Thank you, Mrs. Grimm.
I have a question for you. What do you believe is the role of a school director?
Well, work miracles, of course. I think that that is, and air again, see, because I shut off the first time, apologies. I think that that is the mistaken expectation very often. And while I wish that we all could do that, I don't believe that that is terribly realistic, though sometimes it happens and thank you for that when it does. In a perfect world, at the very least, we would be able to sit back and take in that information as it's presented to us and hopefully it's presented in a truthful and open fashion. And then, as you said earlier, take the time to sit back and digest it as much as you're able to. Certainly, sometimes you have to do things very efficiently and it doesn't allow for that digestion. But whenever you can, really process it and take it in as opposed to just do what you're told to do. I am an incredible rule follower, sometimes to a detriment, but I've learned you need to stop and really get to the root of whatever it is. And once you've processed all of that information and are sure that you have it in front of you, then you work together with all of your many perspectives and roles to say, okay, what is really best for our community? And that includes all of those parties, not just your kids, not just the vast community members, not just your teachers, but everyone, and then make those decisions accordingly. We know that that's the role, but that really is the work that is done. So it's not just this poof, magic wand and everybody's happy and everything's fixed. Honestly, I don't know how you do it. I'm looking forward to learning it one way or another, whether I'm here as an active part of it or I'm here as someone more observant. I'm really looking forward to seeing how you make that happen because it does seem like magic when it works out. I applaud you no matter. Don't envy it. I'm a little, honestly, part of me's going, please not. This way I get to say, I tried, but it didn't work out. But should it work out? I'm looking forward to becoming an active part of it because I think it's really amazing. Thank you for it.
Well, I feel like this might be the third time you're answering this question, but stuck.
That means I did, yeah.
No, no, no. My question is basically on, there's two roles of a school board director and one of them is to pass a budget, okay? That's the big, that's the big job. And my question is in terms of, you know, we've talked about prioritization. So I guess it's, I heard your answer saying that, you know, everybody works together and we're in a win-win solution and all of that stuff, but there are things that are starkly in contrast, okay? Sometimes there is a choice to be made in that circumstance where you have to make a choice and somebody is going to lose because somebody-
because somebody desperately wants this program, and somebody desperately will not pay for it, okay? Or, or there's something else that's vying for it, or the, you know, how, how do you go about prioritizing when there's going to be somebody who is going to lose? There's, there's no way to make it a win. And I know that, you may not agree to that premise, but you, you just have to stipulate to that premise for the, for the sake of this argument. If some, if you have to make a choice, how do you make it? What is your sort of priority for making that choice?
The same way that I do in my own home and with my own budgeting. I look to need first. Is this a need, or is this a want? As you just said yourself, often, you know, they really, really want this program, yes, but do you need it? Because we need facilities for our children. If they don't have a building to learn in, then there's no learning regardless of what program you have. If there is testing required, though we don't like it, but it's required to be done in order to get our federal funding, I'm sorry, folks, but we're doing it. Because we need that federal funding, or we're all going down. Doesn't mean we're gonna like it, doesn't mean we're gonna enjoy it, but we really need those dollars over there. So, I'm sorry, you're not gonna like it, but there are some things that are gonna have to happen in order to get to that next step. Like, if I don't pay my mortgage, and I don't have my house, it doesn't matter what couch I wanna put in it, it doesn't matter what TV, doesn't matter what video game my kid wants to put on that device if I can't pay for that device to have the internet. You know, there are basics that have to happen first. So need comes first, want comes second. So I need to have the real numbers in front of me first. And all of those needs are top priority, regardless of what and where they are. And then all the rest, once you have your cake, then you get your icing. Not everybody's gonna like that, but that's the way it's gonna be. And maybe, you know, you got your icing last time, you get it this time. Not everybody's going to win, as you said yourself. I'm sure gonna try, but it's just not a reality. So the need comes first, and I need real numbers in front of me for that to happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, we'll come back to you, Jim, you're good? Okay?
Now, my question was asked, was answered.
Okay. Scott?
If you were on the board, you'd be asked to serve on committees, curriculum, policy, facilities. Are there any of these that jump out at you, that you feel you'd be best suited for, or ones you would not want to take part in?
Again, as not a numbers person, the budget, of course, is always the hot one that no one ever really wants. But I trust that I would be permitted basic tools, like a calculator, and a spreadsheet, and all of that. So, that said, that admittedly, numbers are not my specialty. As long as I have all of those resources in front of me, I'd be happy to serve wherever most needed. I'm not gonna be intimidated by, oh, this is the one that no one likes, and no one wants. I'm the low man on the totem pole if I'm walking into this. So wherever I'm supposed to go, as I'm a rule follower, that's where I'm going to go. I've done everything in life, from work on a dairy farm for over a decade, to then, you gotta put on the dress, and you go, and you host the prom. And even there, I mean, that's a $50,000 event. And you make that work, because those kids are gonna have a safe and fun night. Wherever it's going to be most advantageous to us all, count a gal in. I'm there. And then, after a year of it, should I be here longer? Ask me again. I might have a very different opinion, we'll find out. And maybe because I really, really want in on another, or maybe because I wanna avoid one. But at present, I don't know enough about them, aside from to say where you need me most.
Jody, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the board?
Our pastor, yesterday, was very compelling. So the next time you want something done in our community, definitely call him. Dave Shalloway did a great job. If you didn't notice, several of us are here today. So he's the reason that we felt called to be here. Good job, him! But I enjoy community service very much. And as I've wanted to become more involved in our school, I'm obviously very involved in the schools that I work for at all levels there, but I'm excited to become involved in my children's school. Certainly, I go to Mrs. Kohler, and she does a lovely job with her story time. And all of the wellness events in all of Boyertown, who's a friend of mine, has been the head of the Wellness Foundation there, and so we're very involved in our community. But to have the opportunity to become involved in our school, here where my children are, that's exciting to me. And in terms of the board, that's an area that I've only seen, I've never been able to take part in, and clearly not doing that where I work, that would not be appropriate in any way. But this allows me that insight, and I'm excited about that. If I can be of service, I'd like to. If not, I still get to start coming now, because my children are in a position where they're not quite so young, they're still young. When you have four babies in a six-year span, you don't get to come to a nighttime event like this. Tonight, they know mommy's at a meeting, and they're rocking it, because they're making brownies with a friend, and they're having a good time, and this is a nice time for me to start this. I'm happy to be able to learn more about it from this side. Thank you.
And I just have one more. This is gonna be a scenario.
Okay.
A parent comes to you and complains about a teacher. What suggestions would you make to the parent?
Naturally, I would need the specific complaint first. In my classroom, it's always, if you have something positive, say, oh, yeah, you include that name. If it's negative, give me what you need to give me. But unless it's something I would need to report, I don't need the name. You just gotta vent, fine, you do your venting. But in this case, I would need specifics, because I would need enough information to be able to adequately address it. And then, I'm gonna want the basics. Is this a scenario where you have attempted to, depending on your child's age, talk to them? Then, did you talk to that educator? Did you talk to their direct superiors? And not in a rat amount kind of way necessarily, but did you go through the proper chain of command? Because that's really important. Those people are there for a reason, and that open communication should be occurring. And that's, again, maybe you don't have that opportunity. If there are valid reasons, certainly. But if you're just trying to circumvent all of those very important people, I'm gonna call you on it. I'm gonna be polite about it, I'll never disrespect you, but I'm gonna wanna know, why did you not go to the resources you had? Because my experience with those resources, they are resources, and you should utilize them. And once I have that information, I'm going to do what I can to reach out to them, and have that dialogue first. And then we move from there. But I'm gonna need to know, I mean, Dr. Schurk's sitting here, he's not doing it to waste his time. He's actively engaged for a reason, and I'd like to believe it's not just for a paycheck, because I don't know your paycheck, but I doubt that it's as much as you could be making doing some other jobs. And not to say we should change the budget, not trying to suggest that, sorry. If you want a pay raise, we'll talk about that another day. It's one of those things where people just make these assumptions, and I'm not gonna sit and make 'em, I need the information first. Thank you. That's, and all, you know, she, that's their friend, and they're on the board, and you're not just gonna magically fix it for 'em, there's no wands here. Those are at home in my kid's little bag from Harry Potter.
All right, second question is on the second responsibility of a board director, which is basically to select and evaluate the superintendent. We don't, we don't move bus stops, or we're not supposed to. Move bus stops. We're not, we're not supposed to look at each and every teacher, and, you know, that's, that's not the job. The job is to select a superintendent, who then picks the staff that they want, or, you know, keeps the staff as they have it, and find it, and improve it. And we evaluate them on the job they do for that. So, you mentioned that you ran a store, you were a general manager for restaurant?
Yes.
Okay.
Not the general. I, I had all of those positions, in terms of, yes, we had times when our general manager was out. So then collectively, whether we were back of house or front of house, we would step up and do those positions. But yes, restaurant manager, Hooligans Cheesecake Factory, all those fun ones. I know good food.
Did you, at any time, were, were you responsible for evaluating people, or?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So what is your general approach when you do an evaluation? In terms of your, the general attitude that you bring towards it, and how do you, how do you view the mechanism?
Yes. At present, with a student, because it's more present day, if I have an issue in my classroom, I'm gonna call you to that hallway, but I'm gonna call you out, and I'm gonna begin, courtesy of Coatsville, they taught me well during my student teaching, they explained to me that many of those students, the last thing they've got left is their pride, and you're not gonna step on that. And so thank you to them for that. Because you pull a kid out, and you say, what do you need? As opposed to coming at them, you come to them, makes a world of difference. And I was fortunate that I was able, because they expect you to get in their face and come at them. You ask them, what do you need? If a kid's acting out in your room, there's a reason, they need something. Obviously, I need them to be respectful, because that's my one rule in my room, and that encompasses all other rules, as it does my children at home. That's pretty much a given. But once I know what they need, and why that is their behavior, then we can go from there. And I realized then, that is what I did as a restaurant manager. I would ask, if this is your area of opportunity, as opposed to if I may be so blunt saying, this is what you suck at, because that's how my 12th graders speak. I'd say, hey, here's your area of opportunity. Now, how are we going to fix this? And ask them for their ideas and suggestions, and then, of course, I'd offer my own. Very tangible approaches, as opposed to just, you need to do better. Well, clearly, or they would've had a solid review. But we need steps, we need something solid. If we just say, you didn't do well, well, that's great, but why didn't you do well? So there needs to be something concrete, there need to be those clear systems in place for, yes, I'm gonna give you your praise, I'm gonna find what you did do well, and then, I'm gonna tell you, here's what I need from you. And then, what do you need from me? Because if it's more training, let's do that. If it's, I need basic respect for your coworkers, for your guests, for even me, I don't like you stepping on me, but you're stepping on your coworker, just like now, you're stepping on your classmate, now we got a real issue. So I'm gonna find out, what can I do for you, here's what I need you to do for me, with tangible goals in mind. Not just, oh, you gotta improve. Like, if you need to have more sales, well, how are we going to get more sales? If now, you need to get your grade up, great, how are you going to get it up? It's not just that magic wand, you need something solid.
Very good.
Thank you.
I've been falling off on my timer, but, pretty sure we were close on that one. All right, so, my, the last question, as I told you before you stepped out, was, what else would you like to tell the board? What have you not been asked about that you would like us to know?
It's probably going to sound like I have wasted your time, so I apologize, but really, this was not something that I had anticipated today. I just want you to choose who really is the best candidate. If that happens to be me, then rock on, count me in. But I really mean it when I say, choose whoever is most suitable. And I met some really lovely people in that lobby, they're fantastic in their own right. And so this isn't some like, oh, just be super humble, and, no, I really mean that. I want, and again, it sounds so cliche, and I've said cliche enough times, I'm sure now, but like, do what's best for our kids, but really, I have four of them in our district, and I live here, obviously. So whoever's gonna be best, if it happens to be me, yes, I will give my all. But if not, that's okay. And I know you don't just happen to know off the top of your head, but just continue to do, as you have been, I assume, what is best for our entire district, because we got a whole lot of people here. Thank you very much for taking your time. I sincerely hope I haven't wasted it.
No, you have not, and thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for your answers.
Thank you very much, and thank you for this weather.
For those of you who do not know me, my name's Andy Corman. I know Jim, and Al, and the rest of you are relatively new faces to me. So, I am a 13-year resident of Upper Potts Grove Township, I live on Gilbertsville Road, and I have a 15-year-old 10th grader, and a 13-year-old 8th grader. Both of my boys are involved in athletics in the district, have been for quite some time. My oldest son runs cross-country, he's on the swim team, and he is involved in track as well. My youngest son is involved in middle school soccer, middle school track, and he was actually Tarzan this year in the, or last year, in the school play. So, my wife and I, we love living in the district, and we're both hard workers. I work locally for a company in Gilbertsville, and we do water treatment, water technologies for business and for residential customers. So, that's my opening statement. I look as myself right now, as a person of service, that's my intention in being here, of being a person of service, to the community, locally and regionally, and then, just overall. So, with that, I guess, I'm sure you all have questions. I did wanna answer Francis' question, did I say that right?
Yes, sir, you did.
So, the term, Matt Alexander's term, ends in November of 2019, if I'm correct in saying that. My intention would be to run for office after that term has ended. And then, did you, you had another question?
You can wait, 'cause I know somebody asked that.
Okay. All right. So that wraps that up.
Thank you.
Let me ask you this, you've got kids in the district. What are the things you, start with the easy one, no, the hard one. What are the things you most dislike about the district?
So, about what I dislike about the district? Let me clarify that statement. I am very involved in my kids' academics, both my kids' academics, and I'll use this expression, with regard to Power School, I am like white on rice. And, and they, they both know that, having used Power School themselves, and my wife and I, I'm primarily the one that, that uses it, to do a check-in on them, and how they're doing with their academics. And I guess my frustration is, when there's a breakdown in, when, when their grades are posted, and there, there seems, sometimes there seems to be a lapse in when they complete projects, and when they're graded on projects. So that would be maybe my chief complaint. That's, that's really kinda what comes to mind right now.
Harder being on the board is obviously making decisions, and the decisions do affect, sorry, you lost your second question.
I shouldn't make notes.
The decisions we make affect, you know, students, the teachers, the community, and sometimes, you have to, I don't wanna say favor, but one group, one of those three factions end up, you know, getting what they want, the other two have to suffer, so to speak.
Okay.
And there's varying degrees there. Sometimes everyone works hand in hand, other times it just doesn't work out that way.
Sure.
Do you see that one of those three groups should get more attention than the others, as it's the upper hand? Not, but explain, please.
So, the way I see, I guess, the role of the school board is, are we serving the students first? Are they being served first? And then, I guess, the other constituents in that relationship, I guess there would be the teachers there, and then the administrators, was there a third community? So, uh, gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, I mean, I can see how all those three factor in together. The, are the students being served first, is, would be my primary concern. Are they seeing improvements on their academics? That would be the, the first and primary thing that I would be worried about. And then, from there, are the, are the taxpayers, are they, you know, as a fellow taxpayer myself, are we able to see the fruits of their labor? Right? And then the teachers, are they being compensated fairly enough? Are they, do they have enough bandwidth to get their job done? Does that answer that question? Okay.
My, my question's gonna kinda tie in with your answer you just answered with, with Jim and such like that. Obviously, you're gonna hear a lot of different questions about the role of the school director, and one of the big areas, obviously, being budget. This year, being a contract year with our teacher negotiations, I'm curious as to what your general thoughts are, as into about raising the taxes of the community, and how you'll portray that to the community, if the necessary need is to increase the school teacher salary?
Okay, well, with regard to taxes, I can just share from my own personal perspective. My taxes are wrapped up into my mortgage. We're about halfway through our 15-year, or 30-year mortgage. And I personally haven't seen that much affect in, in my, I mean, there has been, but I haven't, it, it hasn't hurt me personally, to the point where... it, it hasn't hurt me personally, um, to the point where, uh, I would jump up and down and scream and make a lot of noise. I don't know about other people, um, but I would want to, as a board member, get, uh, kinda have my ear to the ground and see if anyone is experiencing any kind of hurt, and, uh, address that. Address that hurt kind of head-on with, uh, having perspective from the board, um, if I am so elected, on what exactly is, uh, the reason behind the raise, the raise in the, um, if there is a raise in the, in the taxes. So.
A lot of different issues facing the district and the school in general, social issues, safety concerns, test scores, taxes. Which one of these jumps out at you as an area that needs to be addressed right away? Let you feel strongly about?
Sure, can you repeat those, just?
Social issues, safety concerns, test scores, taxes.
Okay, so with regard to, I would say, uh, test scores, are the students, A, being challenged enough? Are they growing in their academics? And B, uh, for example, if they're in AP course classes, are they, um, are their scores on their AP test commensurate to what their grades are in school? So I would say academics.
Hi, Andy.
Hello.
Hi. Uh, what do you believe is the role of a school director?
I would say that to steer the ship, and obviously, there's many, um, hands working together to steer that ship, and move that ship in the, in the direction that, um, that it should go, um, while having, again, your ear to the ground on what's happening, happening in the community. And as a school board member, you know, I would want to, you know, obviously, make it known that, um, I am a leader in the community, I'm, I'm here to be of service, and I'm here to, you know, guide the school board in the direction that it should go, um, knowing that the taxpayers are the ultimate constituents. So.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, as further proof that we didn't coordinate our questions before we came here, I'm gonna ask you for a third time about the budget. So, the, one of the two roles of a board member is to pass a budget every year. And, uh, we talked a little bit about the priorities and, and where, where we come down on this, and I heard your answers. And it, it sounded to me like you had students first, taxpayers second, teachers third. It's kind of, if you were forced to make a choice, that would be your hierarchy.
Yes.
Okay. There are gonna be times when things are gonna be absolutely incompatible. Not very often, but there are gonna be times when you pick a winner and you pick a loser.
Of course.
Um, and sometimes, you know, doing, I don't wanna say this, sometimes that choice might have to do more with the taxpayers. And in other words, it might be, well, we'd have to, we'd have, to make this thing work, to make the students get the best education, we're gonna have to fire, hire five new teachers, four coaches, and build a building. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
That's an extreme example. I hope you would say, in that case, maybe you'd really fall on the taxpayer side, but what I'm saying is, there are times when it's going to come down, you know, the, the, it's not gonna be as easy as just saying students first and whatnot. So how, how would you balance them? I mean, I know what your priorities are.
Sure, sure.
But the question is, how do you balance?
So, I guess I would use, um, you're probably all familiar with the term, the Benjamin Franklin Balance Sheet. I would list, you know, all the pros on one side, all the cons on another, and whether, you know, whether the students, and, and just lay it out and, and hash it out and, uh, converse over it and make sure that we're all in agreement. Um, even if we're not in agreement, you know, I understand that's gonna happen sometimes. But that, that's how I would, I would do it, in my head. Pros, cons, which side comes out on the, you know, which side, side comes out?
Very good, thanks very much, that's for me.
Thank you.
So now, we're back to you, please.
All right, um, you've talked, there are two, two ti- jobs that, uh, mean jobs that, uh, directors have to deal with. Bob and Al mentioned budget. The other factor, uh, that we have to do is review the superintendent. And I'm not gonna ask you your opinion about the superintendent, but describe how you would go about, uh, assessing an individual's performance and what characteristics you would look upon.
So with regard to a superintendent, what I would say is that, are they, um, and, and as the school board is, um, a collective captain of the ship, um, the superintendent is, uh, behind the wheel, so to speak. And so, um, are the students, again, getting back to the students first, are they seeing the incremental, um, benefits of the academics teaching that they're receiving? Are their test scores, um, improving? And are they learning what they need to learn so that they can, uh, be future leaders in, in our economy, in our society, in our community, in the world? So I would wanna see, um, you know, from point A to point B, is the superintendent at the, um, we know where the students are at the beginning of the year, are they better off at the end of the year than they were when they started? And can we see that? Can we see that progress?
Being that you've been with the district, obviously, for a very long time, all right, what are your current thoughts of how the district's involvement with the community and our reputation is with the community? And how do you feel it can be enhanced?
So I think it actually has a good reputation, at least amongst the people that I, uh, am friendly with. Again, my kids being involved in athletics and, um, theater, we're, we're fairly involved, and we, we, I think we have a good pulse of, um, what people think of the, of the district. And I think it's overall, I would get, probably give it a B, B-plus, overall, uh, as an overall score. Uh, and you had a follow-up question, Al, to that?
It was pretty much, which areas do you think you can, we can enhance?
Can we enhance? I would just say that encourage more people to come to a meeting like this.
If you were chosen, so chosen to be on the board, you would have to serve on committees, curricular, facilities, policy, et cetera. Are there any of these you feel that you'd be best suited for, or ones that you really have a desire to serve on?
I'm open to anything. I mean, I personally like athletics, if that is one of those. You know, my youngest child is involved in theater, if they're, if that's the arts, maybe, if there's something like, s- all same thing. So, yeah.
Okay, Andy, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve as, and on the Board of Education?
Just to be of service in the community, to s- kinda step out as a, uh, potential leader, and to have people, you know, to, to be an ear for people as well. Right? That's my main purpose, is to be of service and to, again, I've been here for 13 years. We're gonna be here at least five more. I don't intend to move. Uh, I tend to be here to see my youngest child graduate. So.
I'm gonna give you a scenario now.
Okay.
A parent comes to you and complains about a teacher. What suggestions would you make to the parent?
So the first thing I would wanna do is, um, as a school board member, the first thing I would wanna do is stop the, um, any kind of noise that might be happening, uh, and just say, what I'd like to do is set up a meeting or a phone call, um, with maybe a principal or the, uh, the superintendent. And, uh, you know, I wouldn't want any gossip going on, I would wanna stop that, and then reply back to that parent to say, you know, let's have some mutual understanding that we need to, um, be on an even keel with so- a situation like this, and address it in the appropriate, uh, manner, in the appropriate channels. Thank you.
All right, last question is, as I promised you, um, do you have anything else that you would like to say to us or anything that, uh, you thought of while we've been chatting tonight?
No, no, I don't have anything except that, you know, like I said, uh, just a minute ago, I'm here 13 years. I intend to be here five more years. Uh, I would like to stand up and serve as a school board member and, um, and take a shot at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're free to stay or go in the other room, as you wish. All right. Well, you drew number four, that was, I, I, I would assume a fortuitous, uh, choice, although we've tried to make it so it doesn't matter.
Probably not for you, because, uh, now you have to, uh, uh, wait all that extra time for me to talk.
I have-
Oh, that's right. You got a r- you got a buzzer?
I, I don't, I don't have a buzzer. Um, but we will, we will chat with you. So, we are going to give you three minutes uninterrupted to tell us what your thoughts are and why you're here tonight.
Well, as you may know, I have some experience on the school board, and, uh, um, I think I have a pretty long list of accomplishments during, uh, those years. And, you know, I thought about trying to write them down, um, uh, so that I would remember them all, um, you know? And I, I got caught up driving back to the shore, and so, I didn't. Um, so I don't have a prepared speech. So, um, uh, you know, I'll point out a few. Uh, I am responsible for these cameras being here. Uh, I'm not solely responsible, and so when I take responsibility, please know that I'm not taking sole responsibility. But I'm pretty sure that wouldn't have happened if I hadn't pushed for it. Um, I'm responsible for, uh, the grading, uh, changes, and, and I will say that, uh, that I'm both responsible at, for that, uh, as a, as a accomplishment, and also, uh, something of a cross to bear, because, uh, because it still needs some work, um, despite improvements that were made. How do I say this without getting myself in trouble? Um, I'm looking at Dr. Shirk, uh, sitting over there, um, and I don't think he would be sitting over there if but for me. Um, uh, though we certainly all, um, many of us played a role in, uh, in that particular accomplishment. And then there's a lot of little things that I did over the years, uh, that I was here, um, that I think benefited the district for the most part. So that doesn't really answer your question. Why do I wanna be here? I'm marginally happy with a number of, of things that I've experienced over the last half-year uh, in relation to my two boys in the middle and the high school, that tell me that we still have more work to do in this school district, that we've made a lot of strides, and we've, we've accomplished a lot. But we still have a ways to go, um, if we're gonna, uh, become a district of choice, which, by the way, was a word that I, I'm also responsible for. So, so I don't, um, you know, um, I was approached by a couple of people in this board, uh, when they heard that Matt was leaving, and, hey, do you wanna come back? And, um, uh, they know that the answer I gave them was no. So that was my initial position. But, but what I've found is that, uh, that I, what I realized, as I thought about it more, is that I have a lot more to give to this school district to help make it better. And, you know, um, I just spent, uh, oh, I just had a wonderful conversation with number five, um, uh, on this list. I think she would be fabulous on the school board. So I'm at peace with whatever this, uh, uh, body decides. Nobody has the experience I have. So that's a good, that, that's a pro and a con, I suppose, if you're looking for new blood, I've heard that, um, then I'm certainly not your person. But if you want somebody who works his butt off to learn what needs to be learned and make the best decision on behalf of the school district, then I am certainly a strong candidate for this school board. How's that?
That's excellent, thank you very much. Um, we're, we're gonna go right into questions, we're just gonna start over there with Charles Nippert.
You may have heard this question already, but, uh, you and I both understand the rules of the game. You would, uh, Tony, you would be, in about three months, having to circulate petitions if you're gonna run again. Would you ru- would you run for your own term, uh, in, uh, 2019?
I wouldn't be here if I wasn't prepared to do that. I'm not looking for a part-time, uh, commitment. Uh, if I'm gonna finish Matt's term, then I'm gonna finish it all the way through, assuming that I can get elected. After all, I did lose by 16 votes, so, um, that might happen again.
As a follow-up, um, what would it take for, uh, since you've said you're, you're going to run again, uh, I have to qualify this. What would it take for us to persuade you to, uh, think about it again?
Well, if you, I mean, are you, are you sa- are you asking if I wa- if I, if I lost here tonight, would I run in, in, um, uh, anyway? I, I can't answer that question, uh, uh, in, in, in all faiths. You know, if I'm on the board, I'm gonna run for reelection. If I'm not on the board, I don't know the answer. There's a lot of energy that one has to expend to, to run, and frankly, the reason I lost by 16 votes is I did not expend the energy, energy necessary to win. Um, and I knew that at the time, and, uh, and I put that on myself. I will say, however, that I, I really gained a lot by having a six-month break. Uh, I really did. So I needed that, I needed the break. I didn't realize how much I needed it until I had it. So. I will run if I am put on the board.
Whenever we've had to make decisions in the past for sometimes benefiting one of the groups within the community, maybe the community itself, the taxpayers, the stakeholders, or the students, or the teachers, sometimes, you know, have you ever felt yourself more obliged to lean towards one of those three stakeholders, the teachers or the students, over the others? Do you try not to? Do you, but an explanation as to why you'd go for one over the other or not?
That's a really hard question, because the, the fact is that, on any given issue, I think that, that flight, uh, being completely unbiased is a very difficult place to be. I try to, to reach decisions as objectively as I can. And I try not to be overly influenced by any facet of the constituency, which I guess, um, is what you're describing. I, you know, during the teacher negotiations, um, it came very close to a strike. Um, and I definitely played a role in helping to push it through with what I guess some people would think was a pro-teacher perspective. But really, for me, it was a recognition of the fact that we weren't dealing honorably with them in many respects, and that they do a lot for our students. So was that a biased perspective? I guess, maybe it was, I don't know. Um, you know, uh, what I did know is that the worst possible thing that could happen to this school district would be a strike. So, so, um, there, uh, my bias was towards the community, um, you know? And at the end of the day, I didn't negotiate the, the, the final contract, that was done by the administration. I just pushed for us to be honest about, uh, salary increases and not say that they got salary increases when they didn't, because that was inflaming the, the teachers unnecessarily. Because that was inflaming the, the teachers unnecessarily. And, and I would hope that this board adopt that approach as it enters the next negotiations, whoever's sitting there. So I don't know if I answered your question, but I, I try not to be biased towards anybody. But if somebody comes to me and says, I have a really big problem and they convince me they've got a really big problem, then I will be biased towards their perspective. You know, because I agree with them. And if I disagree with them, I'll tell them.
Thank you.
Well, mine's gonna obviously fall right into what you were just saying and such like that. And everybody here is probably sitting there saying, damn, you were just answering the question earlier. You played obviously a very important role in the last teacher contract negotiation, right? And I think the teachers are very-
I think less so than people realize.
And I, yeah, I think I know a little bit about it. But that being said, your perspective, obviously I have to clarify this a little bit for versus someone that's not set in your position, as in do how do you feel we're moving towards the next contract which is coming up and how that's going to affect the taxpayer base coming?
I think it's gonna be a really difficult issue because, because the teachers, of course, are going to expect a fair increase on their, on their contract. And to be honest, even though there was a great deal of give in the, the last contract, it was hardly a unanimous vote from the, the union in favor. I mean, you know, there's a lot of people who still feel very strongly that it wasn't a great deal. And, and what's more, there are structural problems with how we, how we provide raises to our teachers that, that on the surface make it look like it's a great deal. But if you're a first or a second-year teacher, it's really not that great a deal even still. So it's a really hard problem. And when you factor in the fact that our taxes are already so ridiculously high, you know, and that we've been holding the line wonderfully on those taxes for the last, oh, I, four years. You know, five years, sorry. It's gonna be, it's gonna be hard. My perspective is we should, we should do the best we can on behalf of our staff. And we need to do the best we can on behalf of our staff in order to be a district that attracts the best people. But, but the financial constraints are going to push hard against that. And where I stand on it is, is just there. I don't feel any particularly strong opinion on those competing facts, other than I recognize that they exist and it's gonna be difficult.
Given your time on the board and where you left off and you had the time off to think about things and see where things are, all the issues facing the school, social, budgetary with taxes, safety concerns, test scores, what issues do you think are the biggest concern?
I'm laughing because that's a bit of a meatball for me. I think that, that we still have some strong issues with our grading system. I think that our the intent of the grading system is not being implemented with fidelity across the staff. And I think it's unfortunately being used in some cases to, to subvert that intent. And I think that that needs to be addressed. I think that the, that, that our the disconnect between some of our AP grades and our AP test results indicate that we need to do some work in that, in some of those classes. That a student who gets an A in an AP class shouldn't get a two on an AP exam. And whenever that happens, that is a failure. It's not just a failure of the students, in my opinion. And so I think we need to really focus in on that. I think that our middle school consistently shows our scores dropping after, after a wonderful elementary program. And I think we need to figure out why and address that. I have ideas as to why, having gone through it with, with my son. I think we waste a lot of time in our language arts curriculum on stuff that doesn't teach the kids what they need to learn to do well on those tests. And I think that that continues in the high school. And that's just, I'm over time. What I could say is that I say these things at the same time as I feel as if we've made great strides. So I don't want it to come off as negative as it sounds. But just because you've made great strides, you just can't celebrate and say we're there now because we're not. Our scores are still not where they need to be. And I'm less concerned about the scores than I am about the fact that, that we have these disconnects between grades and results, for example. You know, that, to me, that's a bigger concern. Or, or a grading system that is being manipulated inappropriately in my mind. Or, or a curriculum in AP that, that is so different from what it could be and doesn't achieve the results that, that our students are capable of achieving. I mean, at the end of the day, isn't that what we need to do? Get our kids to achieve to their level of capability? Or maybe just a little beyond, not just say, okay, that's all we can do? So, anyway.
Thank you.
So we meet again.
Hi Patty.
Good to see you. How are you, Rick?
I'm good. How are you?
What do you believe is the main role of a school director?
Patty, can I just say, since nobody's gonna ask me this question, that my biggest regret on the school board is that I didn't do as good a job with you and find a way to work productively with you. So, so- What's that?
There's a lot of reasons for that.
Well, I don't know what the reasons are, but, but it's, it's one of my biggest regrets. So I'm saying it publicly to you. In, and what was your question? The role of a school director?
Always trying to avoid me.
What's that? Oh, yeah. I, I think that if you folks don't know that I know the role of a school director, the role of a school director is to represent their constituencies with fidelity. At the highest level, it's to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States because after all, that is what we, what, what school directors pledge when they, when they get sworn in. And then from there, it's a very diverse and difficult job, which takes a lot of time and, and, and energy and effort to get it done right. It involves learning about things that weren't in, in your curriculum in college and immersing yourself to, to make the best decisions possible. It involves, it involves negotiation with people who have very different viewpoints from you with the hope that, that you can come together to make the best decision possible on behalf of the students, the teachers, and the community. Without any bias towards any of those, those competing constituents, because sometimes they do compete with each other. It's, I would say most importantly, a school board director is a volunteer who is, is a community servant and should serve their community with fidelity.
I'm just not gonna ask the same question a third time of a man who's a school board president and has served for as long as you have. I'm just not gonna do it. So I'm gonna pass my question and we'll go back to you.
Ricky raised an interesting question and hopefully, hopefully we can have a, an intelligent discussion on this. You mentioned your constituency. And the question is simply this, and it's a kind of philosophical one, looking at things from 30,000 feet. Who is your constituency?
Well, I, I thought, I, I, I thought I just answered that question, but I'll try again.
Yeah.
I think that the constituencies, there are multiple sub constituencies. At the highest level, this constituency is the residents of the school district that include the students. But then, but then there's the staff that are not residents of the school district. So they're also part of your constituency. And, and the administration, I mean, at the, you know, I guess the simplest answer, as I think about it, is that the school district is your constituency because, because we are all part of this school district and, and we all benefit from its successes and we all pay for its failures in various ways, whether, whether we're taxpayers or not, or whether we're, we have students in the schools or not, whether we're grandparents, whatever, whatever your part, your connection is, if you live here or you work here, you're part of it. And, and, and everybody, you have to be part of it if you're on this board. So everybody is, I guess even each other is part of our constituents, constituency, to the extent that we all come with our own needs in this district.
Okay, thanks.
I'm gonna add first, I'm gonna make a statement. Rick, now you know how hard we worked with the curriculum. You've had it six months. No matter what happens, please come back and help us with, even if you're sitting either on this side of the curriculum committee or on that side, please come back.
So I don't have your vote, is that what you're saying?
I didn't say you didn't have a vote. We didn't vote yet. I'm not gonna tell these people I'm voting for you yet. But I just, you know how hard we've worked together on the grading and such like that. And I know how passionate you are with myself and Jim and Ashley and everybody here on the board on the curriculum side. So please. Yeah. Question. You're gonna have a really good answer for this one and a really good pulse for this one, right? Being with the social media and everything like that and how close you are with the community as a whole and having a good sense of the pulse of our reputation and our district involvement. What are you hearing and how can we better enhance our involvement with the community?
Well, the truth is that, that in March, I changed jobs and went from working from home to commuting to Wayne. And, and that extra two hours out of my day to and from Wayne, almost, sometimes a little less, and the nature of the job itself, which involves a lot of evening work, has put me at something of a disadvantage for that question because, because the truth is that, that fortunately not, there haven't been too many blowups on social media that I've had to pay close attention to. Or if they did happen, I didn't notice them. So, I mean, I still administer the groups, but, but I, what was the question again?
As in where we stand now, from what you're hearing and seeing, obviously from your perspective, and how we can better enhance our community involvement?
Well, that's the age-old question. Community involvement has been going in the wrong direction for a while, I think, particularly at the elementary level. And even, you know, every time I see a dance canceled, I cringe, right? Because usually it gets canceled because there aren't enough people who want to dance, you know. I, I don't know what the, I don't know, you know, I argued with Matt about this so many times because he felt that social media was the problem. And that you would improve things just by getting rid of it. But you can't get rid of it. You can't. I mean, I could, I could delete all those groups tomorrow and somebody else would just make new ones. It's here to stay, whether I'm involved with it or not. And the answer to your question is, I think that, that things are probably better from the community relations than they were a few years ago. But, but there's always this undercurrent of unhappiness. And you see it come out when issues of controversy occur. Whether it's a teacher who gets accused of something inappropriate or, or somebody brings a knife to school, even if it's a little penknife, you know, or a fake hand grenade. Each one of, ones of these types of incidents sort of inspire the, the bad feelings that a lot of people have to come out. I don't know what the answer is to, to address it, but it's still there. Did that answer you?
Yeah, it is. You know how positive I think social media is.
Well, I think, I think it is neither positive nor negative, to be honest. It just is. And, and it shows its positive lights in all kinds of ways, like when we all come together to, to raise money for a family in need. I mean, we, it gets used for a lot of good. But it sure, it sure reveals a lot of negativity as well. I don't know what the answer is.
I'll be next. I'm gonna give you a scenario.
Okay.
Ready for this? I already know your answer.
Oh, my God.
I already know. I know you.
Will you honestly tell me if I gave you the answer that you expected?
Here we go. You ready? Scenario, a parent comes to you and complains about a teacher.
Oh.
What suggestions would you make to the parent?
Well, that's great because, because when I first got on the board, the suggestion was to tell him to go to the principal. And, and I balked at that because, because oftentimes in the scenario, the circumstances are such that they've already been to the principal. Or the circumstances are such that, that they're uncomfortable going to the principal, and here's the reason why. Usually, usually when people come to a member of the board, they're at their wits' end. And when people are at their wits' end, I personally believe the last thing you do is push it off on somebody else. So, so what I did and would do is listen, first of all, to what the person has to say and, and take the time to understand their problem as best as I can. And if I have advice to give them about how they could resolve their issue, then I provide it. If I think that it's an issue that needs to be escalated, then I don't tell them that they need to escalate it. I, I put them in touch with the person who, who needs to address the issue. Whether that's the superintendent or the assistant superintendent or the teacher themselves or whomever. I don't like passing the buck to somebody else because I feel as if that's not our responsibility. We sign up to help our constituents. If our constituents come to them and all we ever say is, I can't help you, you need to go to the principal, then then that is not a very service-oriented approach to the job. And I reject that approach strongly. That doesn't mean that I won't ultimately say, you need to go to the principal. But, but the way I get them there is gonna be a lot different than just not listening to them and finding out what their problem is and trying to help them and provide advice. Was that the answer that you expected?
Um, a little bit. It was. It's getting late. I'm just trying to be punchy here.
Glad we only have a few questions.
Yes.
Sir, so you gave us a, an opening statement. You've answered our questions. And so what I'd like to do now is give you another opportunity to have a closing statement. Is there anything you weren't asked that you would like to expand on or anything that you, you felt you wanted to tell us?
I think that the only thing is, is just to sort of reclarify a statement I made in the beginning. And that is that that a person doesn't change, and I'm certainly no different than I was when I was last on this board. But a person can grow and learn and be influenced positively, I guess negatively too, by, by circumstances in their world. And if I am selected to be on the board, I will approach it with even greater energy and desire on behalf of this school district. And, and if I'm not, then I will enjoy my time. So, so I wish all of you, I know it's not an easy decision, especially when there are five candidates. And I've had to make those calls amongst people that I thought were very qualified or who I thought would be very good. And so I'm at peace. And, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Rick.
Hello there.
All right, welcome back. And you're, you're batting cleanup tonight. So you're gonna-
You're still awake?
You're still awake?
Yes, we are. We've been able to listen to all the questions and answers for the other four candidates, and now this is your opportunity. We'd like to start off with giving you the opportunity to have an opening statement, about three minutes, on pretty much anything you want. I'm not going to constrain you in any way.
Okay, so I am here tonight to serve, basically. That comes from having two children, recent graduates, 2016, and this fellow here behind me, who's probably going to keep notes to see how I do with my public speaking. But really, what it comes down to is, the way that the staff has reached out, the job that they've done is remarkable. Many times, you know, you'll have a bit of adversity, and that's where you really find out, you know, what is it going to be? How is that going to be met? And so, my son did have some of that adversity. He was new here in the 10th grade, and he experienced a concussion. And so he was missing school, he was very ill, you know, and then as a mother, you're worrying about, you know, how's he gonna, he's already new, so that's awkward enough in high school, and how is that going to go? And this staff, they just rallied. They rallied not just around him, but around me. Our guidance department, I cannot say enough, we could be here for another half an hour. Just the wealth of knowledge that they have and the way that they, they're kind of an all-encompassing support in so many ways for our kids. And speaking to that, jumping off of that, my children, just like any children, are very diverse in their hopes and dreams. And, again, just the way that the teachers have prepared each of them to realize those hopes and dreams individually, I don't think that they would be where they are today. In fact, I kind of know that, without the preparation that they've had from our teachers here at Potts Grove, and our guidance department with the wealth of knowledge and support that they have provided. And so, that basically just really drives me to want to serve them. In that adversity, and throughout the years of living here in Potts Grove, our community has reached out to us, even, you know, if they didn't know us all that well, offering rides to soccer, to deck hockey games, whatever the kids were into, the community was reaching out to try to help and offering that. Just tonight, I had a community member drop off dinner for our family because they knew our basement was flooded. And, I mean, that just really makes you want to serve. And this is a great position to serve pretty much the whole gamut. So, that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for being so patient and waiting for this. But in about three months, if you were elected to this position, or chosen to serve, you would have to make a decision about whether you wanted to run for election or not. And as you're probably aware, school board is a nonpartisan, bipartisan position. And my question is, would you be willing to run for your own term rather than serve out this partial term?
Sure, absolutely.
What would it take to persuade you one way or the other?
To run or not to run?
Yeah.
Well, I think because I'm committed to the service part of it, that just, you would run because it's about the service. It's not, it's not about yourself.
On the board, you, we have to make decisions all the time, and those decisions affect pretty much everyone within the district. Sometimes they favor more the homeowners, the taxpayers, the businesses, other times they favor more the students, or sometimes the teachers. Do you feel that one of those, you know, the community, or the teachers, or the students, do you feel that we should always try to lean towards one over the other, or not, and why?
I think that your teachers are the most valuable resource that you have. It's nice to have a nice building, facilities, and things like that. But at the end of the day, they're the ones delivering that curriculum and all of the pieces of information that you get outside of the curriculum. And you have a teacher that's been here for, you know, 15, 20 years. Sometimes it's the lesson outside of the curriculum that you're hearing just in extra dialogue. So, to bring it back around to the question, to keep morale high, you have to, you have to support your teachers, and you have to allow them to be heard. You also have to be a great steward of community resources. And since I'm also a taxpayer, I want to be a good steward of that. It's just the responsible thing to do. So, I don't know that there's sides so much. If you're working toward the common goal of serving everyone, you really have to equip the teachers, rather, to equip the students, if you will, to become strong members of the community, well-educated community as a strong community. And so, everyone kind of wins, you know, if you look at it objectively. I don't know that you would automatically side one way or another. You'd have to look at the whole, at the whole field.
As you just mentioned, and kind of leads right into the question and such like that about the teachers, and our best resource and greatest resource and everything like that, obviously being a taxpayer. This year happens to be an interesting year, as in we have the teacher contract years coming up. Now, the question I'm going to have is, as in, your general thoughts on how you're going to explain to the taxpayer if a percentage increase needs to be raised, and why it needs to be raised to possibly increase the salaries of the teacher, if necessary?
So, what I would say is, we already pay so much in taxes, and I think we all probably feel that. And it was, you know, prior, when my husband and I moved here, it was very high. It continues to be high. So, rather than just going with that raising of taxes, I'd like to see, is there anywhere else that we can make that happen for them, rather than just going right ahead with that? I did know that during the last contract, taxes were raised. It was not a terrible percentage, if you will. So, obviously, the lowest possible that you could get away with is how I would vote, because, you know, as I said, we need to take care of our teachers. And I would just wonder if there is another place that we couldn't look a little deeper into, in order to do that.
Safety concerns at the school, test scores, taxes, which one of these do you feel would be the biggest concern?
So, the biggest concern for me, I'm really big with school safety. Our students and our teachers shouldn't have to come to school and worry. It's not something I had to worry about. And that would be more of my focus, would be the school safety.
It's nice to meet you, Tina.
Nice to meet you.
Really nice to meet you. What do you believe is the role of a school director?
Basically, to have the service mindset, to partner with your administration and your teachers, and also be an ear to the community, because you're kind of playing that liaison between all. And to really just kind of be that guidance for the whole process in service. Thanks.
One of the two jobs of the school district, and we've talked about these a couple times already, and this is the third time you're going to hear this, is to pass a budget. And we do have to balance the different needs and wants of the folks. And one of the challenges that I've had in the past is when you have an idea, for example, you want low taxes, you want to minimize the tax increase, you want to do whatever, but there are other realities, there are other things that work against that. And you sometimes have to make a different choice, whether in, on behalf of the facility, a building that you, you know, that you need to build, or renovation that you need to do, or something else related to the students so that we can increase test scores or increase their chances to learn, that might make you, you know, raise the taxes higher than you wanted to. How, I'm going to phrase this awkwardly, but how tied to you, how tied are you to your priorities? In other words, if you're saying that your priorities are going to be the teachers, and, you know, that's inevitably going to come into conflict with the taxes, inevitably. So, how tied are you to those things, and how can you, how would you reprioritize things? What would have to happen to get you to reprioritize from one thing to another, where the things were in conflict?
Well, again, I think you'd have to really look at the entire picture, obviously. And you have to provide a fair contract and something that continues to keep morale high. Again, balancing that with the stewardship of the tax dollars. It's probably the toughest question that any board faces, as far as how do you mix it all together. The thing separating this interview from being a resident, that I've always kind of been wary of, is to kind of be careful and not have a large jump at some point, you know. So, it's nice to have things go low, 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 if no increase at all. It's really nice. But if two or three years down the line, then you're looking at three or four or higher percentage increase, that would be something that I would be forward-thinking and not wanting to do. That's a lot harder to recover from as a taxpayer. I hope I'm answering the question.
Yes, you did precisely. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Do you have any questions, Charles?
Oh, yeah, just one wrap-up. These people talk about budgets, and I'm not going to repeat that question. The other major duty which we have to do is, and it was even mentioned on Philadelphia News, is the review of the school superintendent. What criteria would you look at in that process? I'm not going to ask you your opinion of Dr. Schirck or anything like that. But how would you go about reviewing the school superintendent? What thoughts would you bring to it?
Basically, does the superintendent have a strong vision? Is he or she an excellent communicator? Accountability is big for me, as in any leader. So, those are the three biggest pieces for me. Thanks.
Second question this time. One thing that's different for you is that your children have graduated, everyone else still has them in there. And we have at least multiple members that don't have students in the district, so it's not a plus or a negative. But to you, do you see that, I mean, do you see yourself looking at the board in a different way now that your children have graduated? Or like if you had done this two years ago, do you see that your focus might be a little different now than it was two years ago?
I think it may have been different, having them in the school, because I would have been more, had more communication with the staff, because you're, you know, you're partnering with them directly. Now, I'm coming at this from a standpoint of, this was really, really good for my kids, and I really want to serve them. And so, it's different, yet it might actually be better now, because I've had the experience. And I want every child to have these experiences. I love the way that we kind of educate every child, you know, whether they go to college, they learn a trade, they go to the military. I just, I love how multifaceted the education is here. And I think maybe the fact that the children, my children, aren't here any longer, maybe benefits me a bit in that I can stand back and have a more broad view than what I did prior.
I'd just like to add one thing, since the first time I've met you. I've known Mason for the two years, and while he was here, he's an exceptional young man, and I just wanted to pass it along to you, because he served on the board for two years, and I never had a chance to say that to one of his parents.
Thank you.
I just wanted to pass that along, so.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to ask my question in relation to, with Mason being here, you obviously have a much different perspective than others. And of course, with your children both being graduated. I'm not going to ask you the general same question I've asked everybody, but slightly different way, as in to, for a parent and a community member that does not have children in the district now, how do you see the district could enhance the relationship with the whole community for that area of our community, as in the parents and community members that don't have students here in our school district?
There are a lot of, gosh, as I think about that, there are a lot of opportunities to serve and kind of bring the community in. We have retirement communities, the kids could do things within that aspect. Our kids are working in this area, you know, they're working at the local grocery stores and pretty much anywhere that our community members go to just do their day-to-day. And so, there's always, there are so many opportunities to reach out. I love what we already do, where we have the veterans breakfast. And we do so much outreach in that way, which is really nice. I don't know that other schools do that. And I know, for example, my father thought that was really nice to come as someone who served the country and have breakfast with his grandkids. That was really neat. But there are many opportunities, you know, the retirement communities are just one aspect. We have, oh, there's just, there are so many ways that we can get the students out there. And it's not something to make it a mandatory, like I know there's service hours. But to kind of rally it such that they want to go out, that it doesn't matter that I'm going to get service hours for this, that it's something they really just want to do in order to serve the community. There's a way that I think you can do that.
Being a warrior, you have to serve on committees, curriculum, athletics, co-curricular policy, facilities, are these, which one do you feel you're better suited for, or one do you really have a passion for?
I like curriculum. I also like athletics. Really, it would just be where the need is, at the end of the day.
Is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the Board of Education?
Basically, just that, kind of going back to what I said about, so that every student has the opportunity to go out and just grab a hold of every opportunity that this district provides, which is, which are so many opportunities. That would, that is my motivating factor, is just to make sure that every child, every student, when I think about high school students, is able to go out and just grab everything that this life has out there for them.
I believe that, too. Okay, I'm going to give you a scenario.
Sure.
A parent comes to you and complains about a teacher. What suggestions would you make to the parent?
Well, I would ask if they've spoken to the teacher. And then, if that's a yes, then I would direct them to that building administrator, principal. And hopefully, they wouldn't have to go beyond that. Hopefully, it would be, that that would be enough. But you have the chain of hierarchy to follow. Yeah, yeah.
All right, so we've arrived finally at our last question of the evening. So, as I promised you earlier, what I said was that you'd have an opportunity to make a closing statement, or summary, or you can reach back and revisit any of the answers that you've given us already, or you can tell us something new that you didn't get brought out in the questioning. So, it's your time.
So, I just really appreciate that there are so many people here to apply for this. As a taxpayer, I think that's awesome. It's great to have choices as a board and as an administrator, to be here to hear all the great things that are being done. I'm glad that I got to brag a little bit on our staff, and... That's okay. And so, I just appreciate the job that everyone's done. And I know it's not easy to serve, it never is. You always, you know, you put yourself out there to serve, and it can be tough. But you do it, and I appreciate it, again, as a parent and a taxpayer. And that's pretty much all I had. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
But before we get to public comment, I'm gonna just say a couple things, and that is that, um, I am very humbled and very honored to have such an embarrassment of riches of the five candidates that we have. Five exceptional people have come out. Um, and the good news is, we have five great people, and the bad news is, we're going to just be picking one of them, uh, here shortly. But I would encourage all of you, um, to consider taking additional opportunities to work with the board, to work with the district, because the kind of spirit that each of you exemplifies and has brought here tonight is exactly, exactly what we need more of. When we talk, we, we all recognize that we've got a problem with community participation in this district, and we need to revitalize that. Um, a lot of us are interested in finding ways to do that, and we need to have the help of all of you to make, make progress on that. We can only split us up so many different ways, um, and we'd like to have more help. So any help that you could give, we would appreciate. So even if you're not the one who's chosen for the next 16 months, uh, we would like to see a lot of, a lot more of all of you. So, there's that. So, we'll move now to public comment. Are there any comments from any of the public? And I hereby grant you all public status, again.
I would have liked to answer some of those questions I didn't get asked.
I did my best, Rick.
But it's all right.
Anything else? All right. Very good. So I guess, at this point, a motion to adjourn will be in order.
Have any deliberations now, or is it tomorrow? Just all? No deliberative? We can talk right now?
I know it has to be public.
Yeah.
I'm just curious if that's what we wanted to do, or if not.
I actually personally would like to take this and absorb it, you know, so I don't have to be so fast at everything. I'd like to just take it in.
It can be part of your business tomorrow.
Sounds good.
You put that on there?
It will be, just probably after our new business talk.
Right.
I'm very proud of all you think and did good.
Yeah, Rick, that's very true. You make the motion, please.
I'll make the motion to adjourn in a special meeting.
Well, let's do adjourn. We have a second. Okay? I heard you, but you mumbled. He spoke up. So we, we go with the second. So we have a motion, a second. Any questions, comments, worries or concerns? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. So, note of bioclaim. We're outta here. Thank you very much.